Okay, good morning. Today is February, Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Okay, all five are present. We're ready to conduct business today. Is Chad Fagundes here today? No Chad? So would you all please rise for the invocation, please?
Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the boards of our communities. Amen.
Okay, Jimmy Hook, would you please, uh, read us in a, read our nation's flag? Okay, we'll move on now to the next part. Yeah, it got me all flustered with no, uh, minister, preacher here.
I kept looking at the ceiling.
I heard it creaking. At this point, we move to unskilled appearances. Any person may directly address this board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest. Two minutes are allowed. Do we have anybody if I could, uh?
We have received no written correspondence, no speaker card, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
We, no one in the audience? Okay, very good. We'll move on now to item three, approval of minutes. A report out of closed session from the regular meeting, February sixth, twenty twenty four.
There is nothing to report out of closed session.
Okay, uh, item B, approval of the minute from regular meeting, February sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor of proof that's presented. Move on now to consent counter. Any item can be polled if a board member would like to see it polled or voted as one item.
Moves presented, Ms. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, five in favor. We'll move on now to regular counter. And we have ag department, we have Jimmy Hook, Jimmy Hood, and Linda Schumpf. Good morning, Linda.
Good morning.
How are you today? That's fast, huh? Less than four minutes?
Good morning, Chairman Verboen, members of the board. I'm, my name is Linda Schumpf. I'm the deputy acting commissioner for the Kings County Department of Agriculture. And I'm here today to ask your board to approve the cooperative agreement with the California Department of Food and Agriculture for the county's exotic pest detection program retroactively effective July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. This has been an annual agreement for the last thirty nine years and is retroactive because the California Department of Food and Agriculture did not submit this agreement to my department until January ninth of this year. Uh, the exotic pest detection program plays a key role in the overall pest prevention strategy in California. Therefore, I urge you to approve this agreement. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Any questions or comments? So move exotic pests. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Five in favor. I'm still curious what an exotic pest is.
Any kind of, uh, uh, fly there or a pest that is not present in California already that is.
Okay, so anything new?
Basically.
So not like a leaf roller or?
No, we're talking like Medfly or something that doesn't naturally exist here.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to item B, Department of Finance. Eric? Oh, Karina. Megan? No, I'm sorry. Hey, Megan. Good morning.
Good morning.
I hate wearing glasses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Megan Campbell, Treasury Manager with the Department of Finance. And I'm here to request the board to consider approving the request from Tiller Lake Greenwich District to purchase the tax-defalted property identified as parcel zero two eight, three one zero, zero one three, zero zero zero. This property is located in Corcoran at the corner of fourteen and a half Avenue and Nevada Avenue and includes one hundred and eighteen point thirty nine acres. The Tiller Lake Greenwich District is requesting to purchase the property through a Chapter Eight agreement sale to build additional evaporation basins to enhance crop productivity. Um, until the permitting of this project is secured, the district plans on using the property for flood mitigation. The sale price of the property is determined based on the minimum bid set by your board on January ninth, uh, twenty twenty four. The minimum bid for this particular property is ten thousand six hundred plus taxes, penalties, and the cost to conduct the Chapter Eight sale. Um, your board approved the sale of this tax-defalted property on January ninth. And nonprofit and government agencies are permitted to purchase tax-defalted property outside of the bid process through a Chapter Eight sale if they will be using the property to benefit the community. The agreement to purchase through a Chapter Eight sale must be approved by the district's board, the local Board of Supervisors, and then is sent to the state for final approval. The property owner still has up until March sixth to redeem the property. If this agreement is approved by the board, the property will be pulled from the auction, and this will allow more time for the property owner to redeem their taxes um, during the state's approval process and during the Chapter Eight sale process. So it will extend the date for them to, to pay their taxes to where it won't, they can redeem it. The Tiller Lake, the Tiller Lake Greenwich District has complied with the purchase procedures required by the Revenue and Taxation Code. We are required to present this to your board, and your authorization is needed to move the approval process along to the state. And with that being said, we respectfully request your approval of the request from Tiller Lake Greenwich District to purchase said property and authorize the chairman to sign the corresponding agreement. And Dustin Fuller from Tiller Lake Greenwich District are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions or comments? Supervisor Valley?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning. So, um, is the simple explanation of the action here is that if the board approves the request um, uh, from the water district, um, that, that decision is only binding if the property, the owner of the, of the land doesn't come and pay. If they pay, um, the, that any approval of the side of the day is null and void?
Correct.
Okay. And then, uh, so I happen to know the person owns the land. Um, when's the last, can you say when the last interaction you had with that property owner is? And do you, did you get any sense of any intentions for them to try to catch up?
Yes, so we did speak to her mid-February. And she's, she actually asked for the extension. Um, you know, unfortunately, we can't grant an extension with this, but this will actually allow longer than normal. So March sixth is normally the deadline. Um, with this Chapter Eight sale, it will be pulled. The state then has time to approve or deny, but even so, it'll give her up until, say, March, April, or further along, until the state approves it. She has a long, lengthy time to, you know, redeem her taxes.
Okay, as long as we're on the record saying that, one, I don't have a problem with, with the, uh, use of the land if, um, the owner doesn't pay, but as long as this decision doesn't bind anything, that's all that I want to know clear.
Right, so the state has the final, um, you know, by, by your board approving it, it's going to then send it to the state to, for the final approval, and they have to deem it's necessary. Um, the reasoning or the purpose for what's going to happen to the property or the land, they have to deem necessary for, you know, and that it's a benefit to the community and it's a benefit to the county even.
Okay, but even if they deem that it's necessary?
Mm-hmm.
And the owner comes in and pays, let's say, thirty days from now?
Uh-huh.
And after March sixth?
Mm-hmm.
And they pay, then they keep their land?
Correct. Yes.
That's all, okay.
Yeah.
All right, got it. Thank you. And thank you, Dustin, for the call, the heads up last week. Thank you. Okay.
So, do I have a motion? Now, do, everybody understand it?
So move it, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, so, do we need to ask if the owner's here in the audience? Does Dustin, do you have any comments or did the, is owner here today? No?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so five in favor? She's been approved, uh, but she has a chance to buy it back or put it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to item C, Fire Department. And off of emergency services, we have Matt Sampley, and we have Abraham Valencia. Good morning, Abraham.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Abraham Valencia, Office of Emergency Services, a division of the Fire Department. So I'm here before you today to recommend you approve the Fire Department and the Office of Emergency Services to accept the grant that we applied to augment our staffing. Um, this is a competitive grant that we applied for, and only a selected few in the whole state of California received it, and Kings County was blessed to receive this funding. This competitive grant program offers state funds to eligible communities, enabling us to augment staffing. This initiative emphasizes advanced outreach, technical assistance, and financial support to jumpstart local progress toward greater resilience. By focusing on capacity building, local initiative development, and mitigation project scoping, the program aims to empower communities to proactively address the unique challenges they face, fostering a more resilient and disaster-resistant California and Kings County. So even before we applied for this grant, the Kings County Office of Emergency Services, the Fire Department, we had been talking with the C O's office about expanding O E S, and this grant opportunity came up, and it's a way for us to jumpstart it, where they give us this, this, these funds to start it, and then we go after grants, hazard mitigation grants, where we're able to charge management and administration costs, where then the staff pay, the staff get paid through those grants. And so they have sustainability, you know, to, towards this grant, but this is just to jumpstart us to get us going. And so I'm here today recommending that you approve us to accept this grant, that you adopt a resolution designated the county fire chief, the C O, or assistant C O to sign grant documents, and also to approve the grant's Civil War certification of assurance of compliance for this grant. These, these resolutions have been approved and, uh, reviewed by county council as to form. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Abraham. Any question or comments, please? So move, move by Supervisor Fagundes. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, good job, Abraham.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, we'll move on now to Human Service Agency. Wendy, good morning.
Good morning. Um, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Wendy Osikoffo, Director of Human Services. On November thirteenth, twenty twenty, H S A, in partnership with Cornerstone, received a four point three million dollar grant from Housing and Community Development under the Project Home Key program to fund the development of affordable housing on land owned by Cornerstone for, um, the Kings Triangle Courtyard project. The project will increase the housing inventory for Kings County and provide twenty four homes for between thirty six and forty eight eligible participants. Originally, Kings County selected Green Galaxy Builders as a successful bidder and entered into an agreement for the com- complete design build services in December of twenty twenty for not to exceed price of four point eight million. However, Green Galaxy significantly delayed the completion of the full project, refused to submit performance bond, and indicated it would not complete the remaining work due to cost increases. As a result, on October eleventh, twenty twenty two, the agreement with Green Galaxy was terminated, and a takeover agreement with Cornerstone was approved by this board. The takeover agreement shifted the responsibility from the county to Cornerstone to complete the remainder of the project, as well as the financial responsibility to complete the remaining work. Querstone, uh, selected Prefab Innovations as a contractor for the remaining work on the twenty homes, and Prefab began that work in November of twenty twenty two. Um, at that time, they identified four units that Green Galaxy had previously indicated met ADA, um, compliance, did not in fact meet ADA compliance. As a result, um, to complete the requirements of the state project, we needed to add back in four additional ADA units. In June of twenty twenty three, Cornerstone had indicated that there was a budget shortfall of approximately five hundred and eighty thousand, um, to complete the twenty units, and an additional, about the same amount, five hundred and eighty, to build the four additional ADA units. Um, the shortfall was attributed to four factors. Increased expenses due to repair, to repair work, repairing the prior contractor's work, damage due to the winter storms that caught the additional cost of the four ADA units, and the fact that Green Galaxy, um, failed to return the approximately five hundred and twenty one thousand in funds that they had been advanced but had not yet expended. Um, in August of twenty twenty three, um, I provided an update to the board. At that time, um, uh, Cornerstone was awarded, not by this board, but by our, um, our health plans, three hundred thousand in housing and homeless incentive program funds, and that came from, um, it was split between Calviva and Anthem Blue Cross. With that funding, um, and I'm not going to read all of that, but with that funding, um, Prefab Innovations was able to complete all of that work. I'll highlight a few things. They were able to rework four of the units that needed to have, um, um, that need to have the electrical redirected, and they had to retrench all the lines. Um, the water and sewer connections were completed for all twenty units. Um, in November, the fire, um, fire marshal came out, and there were discrepancies discovered um, when they inspected the fire main. And basically what happened is, um, Green Galaxy never got the, um, fire inspections from the county. And so Cornerstone, or Prefab needed to re-dig up, dig up the lines and have those, um, have those inspected. That was completed in January of twenty 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 four. Because of those additional issues, um, work has again stopped. They've expended the three hundred thousand of the, the hip funding. And, um, the fire marshal indicated that really, before we do any additional work to finish up the houses, we really need to get the road base raised up and that completed, so fire has adequate access should there be any issues or fire, even before it's occupied. So, um, here's just a current shot of, um, some of the progress made in, in the units. You can see all the trenches are now covered up. Um, stairs are installed on most units. Um, what is remaining to be complete? Another list, I'm not going to read all the items, I'll highlight a few. The biggest thing is installing the road base, um, obtaining the fire permits for each of the twenty units, the, the final electrical inspection. Once the road base is in, they can do the curb, sidewalks, and gutters, landscaping, and then, you know, the last thing would really be the furnishing, furnishings. Um, and then, of course, we still have the four ADA units, but we can get occupancy on the twenty while the four ADA units are being, um, built. Um, you know, for this past six months, um, my department's been working closely with Cornerstone and Prefab Innovations on strategies to obtain the additional funding. I know they've been working on some funded raising efforts. We've explored loan agreements. Both I explored a loan, explored a loan agreement using some available ARPA funding that, um, the county still had. That approved incredibly complicated and in fact is still at the state for review. Should, um, should today's item not be approved, that is a pathway we could consider. Um, but they also looked at, at obtaining loans for this project, and just nothing has borne fruit. Um, however, recently, when reviewing our other project, um, our other project Home Key, which is the Sun Stardust Hotel to Sunrise conversion, um, we identified, um, some available resources. So I want to walk you through that, and that's really the, the proposal I have up here. So HAP three, um, grant funds of the amount of three hundred and forty nine thousand was previously obligated to the Sunrise Hotel, um, which is due to be completed in May of twenty twenty four. We've identified, when we've gone through the budget, that there's, um, immediately two hundred and fifty thousand of that available that will not be needed for that particular project. Um, the, there is an additional approximately sixty four thousand that might become available, but we're leaving it with the project. We've got a few months left. There might be something that comes up. I don't want to pull funding from that and then have an issue, so we, we just want to monitor that. So that, so there is a potential of a sixty four thousand dollar, um, of this HAP three that we could also shift over. Um, or HAP four, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. The HAP, our HAP four grant funds is not obligated to permanent affordable housing. Uh, in Nov- November of twenty twenty two, before we, um, knew there was a budget shortfall, we had made a plan and submitted that to the state for the use of HAP four. And that was to be split, and you can see up there, sixty percent towards interim shelting, sheltering, thirty percent rapid rehousing, ten percent for street outreach. We've not utilized any of those resources currently. Um, we are able to adjust our plan with the state, and so with the board's approval, um, because I did commit to the board that we wouldn't change our plan without, you know, running that I U in November. Um, if we change the plan to permanent supportive housing, it is available to put towards this project. Um, we would then be obligating three hundred and fifty one thousand of the total HAP four towards this project. Both HAP three and four have a ten percent use set aside. It's required, it says youth, but it's really transition age youth, so young adults, that we must be able to demonstrate it's spent on them. So I'm, I'm excluding that ten percent, and what that leaves us is a potential for six hundred and sixty five thousand that we could put towards completing this project. It's certainly enough to get the twenty units completed and to get the work started on the four ADA units. Um, the, let me see if there's any last thing on that I want to share. The, the only reason why I'm indicating potentially available is, as I mentioned, we're holding the sixty four thousand for a few more months until Sunrise is complete. I don't anticipate any issues with the state, but I do technically need to submit the plan. They need to approve our plan, so I don't want to obligate three hundred and fifty one thousand until I know for sure it's approved. So we've structured the agreement to have a range of a minimum of two hundred and twenty five thousand up to six hundred and sixty five thousand in the, um, agreement that I'm presenting to you today. Um, the contract requires Cornerstone to meet all the requirements of HAP three and four grant program. It increases the scope of work to include construction on the four ADA, um, units and establishes a procedure for dispersment of funds that's contingent on evidence of work performed, and clearly establishes that Cornerstone remains obligated to complete the work even if the payments from the county, under the takeover agreement and this amendment, are not sufficient to cover, um, to cover the, the full cost of the remaining work. The county and Cornerstone agree to a completion deadline for the first twenty units of April thirtieth. That's very ambitious. I think the construction work that is remaining can be done in that timeframe. Um, the two things that will, um, have an impact are the, um, SoCal Edison timeline. That may extend it out, but that won't be, that's not on Cornerstone as long as their work's complete by the thirtieth. It takes a little longer to get electrification. I'm not concerned about that. And then the other thing, obviously, is weather, but we already have a provision in the takeover agreement for forces sort of out of our control. So if weather becomes the reason, I want to stay aggressive on the timeline. I don't want to make it May or June and be extending from there. I, I really want to push for completion as soon as possible. Um, and then for the four ADA units, a deadline of July thirty first. H S A is seeking your approval of this first amendment to the takeover agreement with Cornerstone, which will allow for funds available for permanent affordable housing to be used to cover a significant portion of the remaining expenses to complete the project as expeditiously as possible. This agreement's been reviewed and approved by county council as to form, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Robinson?
No, uh, no representation from Cornerstone today. Mr. Clevenger?
Um, uh, Mr. Fevers here, he's the president. Mr. Clevenger's actually traveling out of town, but he's available if you have questions.
Great. Uh, it appears like the, the soil was never properly graded or compacted. Is that so? Or did that just happen because the flooding and, and that? And then, to that point, uh, are we ready in case flooding occurs now?
Excuse me, my understanding is yes.
Yeah, what?
Excuse me, sir, can you please come to the podium?
Take your name and address for the record, and then, thank you. That way we know how to get you later on.
We also have members of the public attending, um, virtually, so they're able to hear you through the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Charles Fever, and I'm President of Cornerstone Board of Directors. Uh, Dave is out of town and not able to be here and asked me to, to subdue. As far as the flooding issues that we had last year, that's been, my understanding is that has been taken care of. And we keep, so we're fully prepared to move forward.
My understanding in general, though, of a critical path is normally after your stub for, let's say, water and electrical, you normally get on to grading and, and compaction. Was that ever initially done or not?
I will not, I cannot answer that for you. Um, it wouldn't, I just don't, it may not have been done because we, as we've continued, taken over this project, we continue to run into obstacles that, uh, Green Galaxy was supposedly, should have done under their original contract and did not.
And so if, if there is flooding again, because we don't know about these atmospheric rivers and such like we had last year, are we prepared this time, so it doesn't set us back again?
My understanding is yes, yeah.
Supervisor, uh, Valley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Wendy? Uh, thanks, sir. Uh, can you refresh my memory? I know we, uh, passed a couple of rounds of packages with ARPA funds. So the money that you referred to, as far as ARPA funds, was that, um, previously approved by the board?
It was not approved by the board. There was some unobligated, um, ARPA funds, and, um, I worked with admin. It was, it was held as we saw what other spending happened. And so there was awareness, I was looking at a potential ARPA loan, um, and I would have needed to bring that here for, for approval. Um, with the approval of this, um, you know, that ARPA money, admin would not be holding that in anticipation of a vote, and it would be available for whatever the board deems.
So were you looking, okay, so were you looking for approval today? Then, um, if passed, then you wouldn't be coming back looking for any ARPA funds?
Correct.
You won't come back looking for any general funds?
I, I don't, I'm hopeful that this, this does not cover the full gap. And it's, you know, that's six hundred and sixty five thousand. They've indicated a gap of over eight hundred thousand, so I can't, I can't say that we're not going to need to look for additional funding. I know there's active fundraising efforts happening, um, and it, we may need some additional money. I've, I've not yet asked for general fund. I've been trying to look at grants and things that are out there. There's, um, I will be coming back in a few weeks for HAP five, which is the next round of the funding I'm obligating, and so that, um, that could be a portion of our plan to, to use some of that to finish this project off. Um, I'm hopeful some of the other resources come through, so we don't have to put all of, all of our grant money towards that, but, um, that is also an option. So I could be back asking for your approval to obligate additional money, but I've not sought general fund, and, um, the ARPA timelines on obligation really need to happen soon, is my understanding, so I won't be seeking ARPA, um, because I'd need to issue that in the form of that loan, and it's really became overly complicated.
Thank you, and I know you inherited, uh, this issue, and it hasn't been a fun journey for you, um, us, the county, and it's just, uh, it's not something that I would be supportive of for ARPA funds or, um, uh, or general funds coming this way. That, that being said, also the pics, the picture that you put up, uh, doesn't do it justice from the fact that it looks like the same pic that we saw last year. And I don't see, so when that picture comes up and says that there's improvements and there's, um, you know, positive productivity movement, it just, I don't see it based on that picture. And, and, and in your defense or mine, whatever, I haven't driven out there. And so I know Sue Verboen has spent time out there, and I'm, I'm more, um, waiting to hear, uh, his reflection on, on the project than when we're at right now.
It remains difficult to see. I mean, what, you can't see, like, what, what, when I was here in August. It remains difficult to see. I mean, what you can't see, like what, what, when I was here in August, there were big trenches. They were still doing the electrical work. That's been completed. The trenches have been covered over. So it is hard to, to see the progress. And I think the road going in, we've done a lot of internal work. You know, getting the flooring lined up because it's two parts of a building that needs to connect. So some of it is difficult to see. There has been, there has been progress, but there's.
Just from some of the hits the county's taken lately and, and money we lose and we can't go after. You know, I don't want to leave the board hanging and, and I won't if the, a majority of the board is supportive of moving forward. But I would be ready, I was, I've been ready to punch out and inject on a, on this one. But again, I don't, I wouldn't leave that on the board. If this is something that we're still going to move forward with, I'd support with the board, but it just, it just seems like we just keep putting the county at risk with these kind of issues that people don't follow their word and they don't commit on contracts. And we get left hanging. And again, there's an obvious amount of need for, for our resources, from our employees to different projects and things that need to be done around the county to then to keep moving forward and then have to you come in and asking for money that I know I'm not going to be supportive of. So.
Understood. I, I, I do want to clarify that we're, the county's at risk either way. So putting additional money into the project to, to the tune of, you know, six hundred, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, there is some risk there. Not completing the project is a payback for the county to the state of four point eight million dollars. And so we really, we really need to keep it. And I'm, you know, I'm trying to mitigate our risk. I'm trying to do things that are not directly impacting county funding. But it, yeah, it's, it's a tough situation because you're, we're kind of backed in a corner.
And you're doing a good job with the challenge. Again, you inherited this. So nothing personal on you.
Thank you.
Once again, I, I recognize that you inherited this, this problem, but I can't emphasize enough that this project should have been bonded, right? So the fact that Green Galaxy refused to do the bonding should have never been issued to them. So in the future, I hope that we remember that bonding has to occur for these projects.
Yes, sir.
If we were pressured pretty hard by the previous department head, this would be a successful operation. It was not. I have a couple of questions. So one question, we authorize Banner to kind of watch along with the construction process? Is Roy still involved in the process?
He is. They, I mean, they, there's no construction that's been happening over the past month or so due to the funding. So they've not been going out there weekly to monitor that. But prior to that, they were going out every week checking on, checking on the status. They had also done kind of a comprehensive assessment of the work that had been completed, the work that needed to complete, the timeline and the cost and, and kind of compared that, not kind of. They compared that to what prefab innovations had produced and were able to affirm that the work, the timeline, the cost all lined up. The issues that were remaining were the same issues that they identified. The one thing that no one knew was the fire main inspections. They did go back and look at their records because they had been previously contracted to oversee the project back when Green Galaxy had it, but they didn't have records and, you know, I don't know. And there, I wasn't part of it then. I can't defend anybody on it other than I know Green Galaxy was very difficult in, in producing information, very difficult to work with. So I, I, I don't know that that could have been mitigated.
And so Roy's still on the job.
And he'll, once we get work moving again, they'll resume going out weekly.
So with Roy's responsibility, so he'll oversee the project that work has been done. And we don't give them the money. We, they perform the duty to get the job done and we pay the contractor after it's done, correct?
Right. The way I have it written is that we're not going to just issue this money to Cornerstone. They will need to invoice. So if they're buying rock, the rock base and it costs X amount of dollars, I'll get an invoice for that with, with, you know, the, the quote for the rock base. I'll send it. When the labor's done, they'll invoice me for that. I'll send it. And so it'll be piece by piece. So they have the potential to claim that full amount. But it's up based on demonstration of work completed.
Because if we're the bank, we need to act like the bank and we don't give them funds until they complete the project as required.
Right.
So as long as we stick on that.
And you're not going to just issue the money and then hope the work gets done. That was the other big mistake.
So when I drive by there a lot, I haven't been there two or three weeks, but one thing I've noticed, there was no pride in ownership. If you had, or be rebuilding your house, your own business, you would make sure that the site looked clean at all times. I never saw it. So there is some frustration here, but we are on a hook for a lot of money and it needs to be completed ASAP. And we're really getting tired of the excuses. So with that, I'll be quiet. Do we have any more questions?
So in the past, we weren't provided with some of these certificates of compliance as, as we went through the steps. Are we getting that now? And I, I understand that Cornerstone maybe has those, but are, are we getting them as well?
Ask me. I'm not sure. Say that again.
So, you know, back at Green Galaxy, there, there was some work that was, that was completed and approved. But now we can't find the documentation for the approval. And I'm just making sure that now in the process, we're CC'd on all those approvals.
I can, I, I am getting copied on a lot, but I can ensure that we're getting copied on everything. I'm also directly reaching out to our fire marshal and Darren Vertigal at Public Works to make sure that the information I'm being provided matches up so that, you know, these are the five things left to do. That's the same understanding from the inspect, from the inspectors and where we are in timing. So I, we are double checking all of that and, and making sure. I think they're called a work card or something, but.
Banner comes in because it's really not, Wendy's overhead here. This is not our job description. She's done a great job keeping it together. So we appreciate that. But, you know, utilize Roy as much as you possibly can. So, yeah. He knows what's right and what's wrong. So.
Yeah. And I can make, I can, I can talk to, to both Mr. Clevenger and Roy to just confirm that that's happening routinely.
We, you said it'd be done April first, right?
Please move to the third.
April thirtieth. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm rushing a little bit. All right. Okay. Any further questions from the board? And I think we have, do we have the questions from the audience? Or they do now? They want to talk now?
Actually, we had some late arrivals for unscheduled, but this is an appropriate time because it does correlate with a need for housing. So that's your call, whether you want to wait until after you make a vote on this and allow them to speak at a different time.
We'll vote, then we'll listen to them, right?
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion?
So movement, Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
And just a point of order. We have like eight seats empty, but we're blocking the door and that's an ADA issue. If some people can remove the items that they're saving for people who haven't attended, so these seats can be available for people who may need to sit down. And if you could fill in the seats, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, you sound like a fire marshal. We'll get back to the board meeting here. So we have five in favor. Madam clerk, the agenda has been passed. I presented. And thank, thank you, Wendy, for your help. We'll move on now. So do you want to take in questions from the, this is the only one we have for home and stuff, right?
Kristen Gardner would like to speak.
Kristen, good morning.
Give her a moment to make her way to the front.
How are you today?
I'm doing okay, even though technically I shouldn't be. I've been living out at the slough. We call it the tree line for two years. Some people have been out there for five. Last Friday, we were given a notice saying that we had until this coming Friday at noon to vacate. We have over twelve trailers that do not run out there. We have over sixty people with no place to go. The police department has said, out of sight, out of mind. We don't want you in the city. They told us where to go. They said it would be safe there. They said we would be okay. But we're not. I'm not homeless. I am houseless. My home is number sixty-three Tree Lane Way. The notice that we were given is completely illegal in a lot of ways. And I don't know who this Four Bay Farms is, but I don't like the idea that they are using our police department to do this. The notice states that the owner, Four Bay Farms, even though there's every website we've looked at, there is no owner listed because the slough is not able to be privately owned. The notice says on Friday, March first, property owner Four Bay Farms will be releasing water into the canal which you are currently occupying. You are to remove all your personal belongings from the canal and away from the adjacent roadway by Friday, February twenty-ninth at twelve PM in order to for work to begin in the area. Friday, March first and February twenty-ninth cannot both happen on Friday. That is the first point of this bogus message. There's no county seal and there's no signature. There's no contact information from Four Bay Farms. We've been notified by farm workers that there's no water system that can get through the slough. They don't have the piping down. What we would like to have happen is save the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that you guys have and help us make home, home. We're already there. We have our own fire department. When we do have a fire out there, fire chief shows up and tells them, stay back. They've got it covered. Unless we run into a problem that we can't handle, they stay on the road. We don't have any interaction with the police unless it's a routine driving or there's an actual cause that happened outside of the tree line. We're a community. We're a family. And we'd like your own help to make home, home. This can't be done in six days and it can't be done with both Fridays happening. I am hoping that I will be able to file a temporary injunction against the removal of the residents of the tree line. I don't have any law experience, but I'm going to do my best because somebody has to. I'm asking you for your help in stopping our police department from being used and stopping government funding from being wasted. Approximately five to six years ago, everyone was vacated off the tree line once before. The removal was the equivalent of a bulldozer that basically buried everything. There is not a foot square plot that you can dig in for over two feet and not run into something from the previous residents that the county kicked out. This can't be good for the waterway. This can't be good for the groundwater. But it was left there. The county is going to have a lot of expenses trying to clean up soil after as many years as people have been out there. We are willing to do our part. We will have it cleaned up if we are worked with. Meet us as far as getting a dumpster out there. We have our own quote unquote police department that enforces our rules. We can make that one of them. Can't stay if you can't keep it clean. But we weren't given that option. Nobody ever said, hey, if you do this, maybe we can work with you. Instead, they tell us it's safe, go there, and then they tell us to get out.
Kristen, that's good. Thank you. Leave your name and address. The clerk has it and we can get ahold of you. Okay? Thank you.
That was all that I.
That was it? Okay. Thank you very much. Move on now to library. Tanya Russell.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Tanya Russell, Kings County Library. I am here to ask you to adopt a resolution to change our public hours for the Hanford, Lamoore, Corcoran and Avonale libraries. For a little background, all Kings County libraries participated in the alternative work schedule program in the summer of twenty twenty-three. At that time, the hours of the libraries in Hanford, Corcoran and Avonale adjusted their opening time to eight AM and closing at five PM. These hours adjustment were also presented to our library advisory board on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. During the summer pilot, library staff received feedback from the three largest communities, Hanford, Corcoran and Lamoore, expressing the preference for the library to stay open after five PM. Foot traffic count at our doors and we count who comes in at all. Our libraries showed little to no attendance from eight AM to nine AM. When the pilot was extended to twenty twenty-four, to December of twenty twenty-four, the Hanford, Lamoore, Corcoran libraries adjusted their hours to nine AM of an opening time, closing at six PM, four days a week to better serve the public. These three libraries are also open nine to one on Fridays and Saturdays. Avonale adjusted their hours to open a little later at nine AM, however, to still close at five PM, three days a week. As staff has found there that the library is used more before five o'clock than after five o'clock. For reference purposes, the Kings County Library are open to the public six days a week and provides forty-four hours of public service to the community. This is more than the three largest cities in the counties neighboring us. So I'm here today asking you to adopt a resolution for our library hours change for the Avonale, Corcoran, Hanford and Lamoore branch libraries. If you can take any questions.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions? Moved by supervisor Fagundes.
I'll second and just comment. Thanks for the data on the impacts. Looks like it's good to go.
You're welcome.
Second by supervisor Valley. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to item F and it's going to be Public Health Department and for Heather Silva this morning. Morning, Heather.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Silva, Public Health. I'm going to go ahead and present the first item that we have. It's three total. So the Kings County Department of Public Health is asking the board today to approve the agreement with the California Department of Public Health for the California Home Visitation Program, also referred to as CHVP. The CHVP program helps assist families who are at risk of adverse childhood experiences, including child maltreatment, domestic violence, substance use disorders and mental health related issues. This program provides pregnant and newly parenting families with the tools, knowledge and support needed to independently raise their children when one of the more following risk factors are present. Domestic violence, inadequate income, unstable housing, education less than twelve years, substance use disorders and depression and/or other mental health related issues. The CHVP program allows local health jurisdictions to choose between three different home visitation models that are strength based and focused on the participants' individual interests. We have chosen to go with the parents as teachers model, which aligns with the home visitation program that's currently being managed by our department and funded by the Human Services Agency. The award cycle is from twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight and will be included in all future fiscal year county budgets. This agreement is retroactive due to getting approval from the state on December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, which is when the initial county approval process started with county council, risk, admin, and then the delay of closure in the holidays. So our department respectfully requests your board to approve the California Home Visitation Program Agreement with CDPH retroactively effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, as well as adopt the budget change. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Move for adoption, Ms. Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you, Heather. Next item.
So the next item is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of February twenty twenty-four as National Children's Dental Health Month. And I'm going to call one of our supervising public health nurses, Marjorie Button, to present that.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I stand before you today representing the Public Health Department to respectfully request that you adopt a resolution to proclaim February of twenty twenty-four as National Children's Dental Health Month in Kings County. A little history on that. The recognition of children's dental health began with a one day community event in Ohio in nineteen forty-one. The American Dental Association held the first observance of National Children's Dental Health Day on February eighth, nineteen forty-nine. And this later expanded to the month long observance that we know today. So each year, the American Dental Association sponsors this event to raise awareness about the importance of oral, oral health for children. This theme this year is healthy. This theme this year is healthy habits for healthy smiles. So in the Central Valley, seventy five point nine percent of children in the third grade have experienced tooth decay. Twenty nine point seven of tooth decay in this population remains untreated. This is high. Untreated tooth decay, commonly known as cavities, causes pain and infections, leading to trouble sleeping, difficulty eating and speaking, missed school days and learning skills, opportunities for childhood play, and these all impact a child's well being. So this is preventable by adopting these healthy habits. Establish a dental home by your children's first birthday or with the eruption of the first tooth. Visit the dentist twice a year. Brush teeth twice daily with fluoridated toothpaste lost between teeth daily. Eat healthy foods, limit the sugary beverages. And drinking fluoridated water can help. The local oral health program is committed to increasing the dental health of children in the community. By joining the nation in the observance of this month, Kings County will bring awareness to the most common chronic disease found in children. Therefore, Kings County Department of Health is asking the board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming February, two thousand and twenty four as National Children's Dental Health Month in Kings County. Thank you, and we do have some tooth brushing kits with us today to encourage your lowest numbers to develop healthy brushing habits.
Thank you. Almost missed it though. February is almost over.
No.
Good thing I brought it just in case.
Got in under the.
Now, do you go to schools and stuff and help promote?
We are working, yes. We actually have a very active commission. We have school nurses, we have FQHCs, dental offices. Everyone is involved to help promote dental screenings if possible in schools and then promote the follow up. With that, connecting those children to dental homes, that's, you know, primary. Yeah, then encouraging good habits, yes.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'll move. Move by supervisor Fagundes. Second by supervisor Robinson. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Hi.
Yes.
Doug Verboen. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
He was thinking if he brushed or not. Hey, five in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I went to the dentist on Monday and got my teeth cleaned, so life's good. And I can say it's for a child, because my wife says I act like a nine year old, so. Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Everardo Legaspi from Public Health. I'm here today to present an item requesting your board's approval of the California, excuse me, Children's Services and Medical Therapy Program Plan and Budget. The California Children's Services, excuse me, CCS program was established in nineteen twenty seven and includes the medical therapy program. Together, the programs provide medically necessary diagnostic and treatment services, medical case management and physical and occupational therapy for children ages zero to twenty one with CCS eligible conditions who meet specific medical, residential and financial eligibility criteria. Among the chronic medical conditions eligible for CCS are cystic fibrosis, hemophilia, cerebral palsy, heart disease, cancer, traumatic injuries and infectious diseases that leave a major impact on a patient's quality of life. CCS is administered as a partnership between county health departments and the California Department of Healthcare Services. And services are provided by specialty CCS approved facilities. In Kings County, there were an average of twelve hundred and forty open CCS cases during fiscal year two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. For children who have disabling conditions such as neurological or musculoskeletal disorders, the MTP through CCS offers physical therapy, occupational therapy and medical therapy conferences, conference services. The MTP is located at the Medical Therapy Unit at Shelley Barrett School and services are intended to be provided by a team comprised of a physician, physical therapist and occupational therapist. There are approximately one hundred and seventeen children currently enrolled in the MTP program. Local CCS program staff include three public health nurses, two children's medical service, services workers, two office assistants, a physical therapist, and we are currently recruiting an occupational therapist. Funding for CCS is a combination of federal, state and county funds and MTP funding comes from the state and the county only. Both budgets are formulated to stay within the confines of their respective funding sources as directed by the Department of Healthcare Services. The request to approve the plan and budget is retroactive due to the state's timeline for the release of the funding allocations, which was received by the Kings County Department of Public Health on October twenty sixth of two thousand and twenty three. We then had to formulate the plan and the budget and then process through the county's system. It is therefore the department's request that your board approve the Children's California Children's Services Plan and Budget retracted, retractively for fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, and approve the medical therapy program and budget retractively for fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, and authorize the public health director to sign the California Children's Services Plan and Budget and certification statement for fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, twenty four and adopt the budget change. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So movement, Chair. Move by supervisor Nevs. Second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Val. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going now to administration. Matthew Boyett. Good morning, Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyett, Deputy CAO, Kings County Administration. So before your board is a lease agreement with the Kings County Water District. So the county currently owns forty acres of water stock in the People's Ditch Company. And since nineteen eighty four, the county has actually leased that stock in full to the Kings County Water District as the water isn't currently required for county use. And so what the district does is they try to procure as much supplies as available for use for the ag users within their district. And so the water under previous leases and the proposed lease before you is for use within the district boundaries only, which is here in the county boundary as well. So the prior lease we had expired in January of this year and the district has since reached out to the county and has expressed interest in continuing the lease for another three year term under similar terms of the last previous leases. So just for your board and, you know, any folks in the public, if they're, you know, wondering why this is before you, given, you know, we've just experienced a flood and are still dealing with the aftermath of a flood. So the, really the water landscape and water management here on the valley floor can change on a dime. And so although we've just gotten out of a flood and are kind of in limbo on any, you know, pending flood, given the atmospheric rivers that supervisor Robinson previously mentioned. With that, the surface water allocations for the Department of Water Resources State Water Project are only at fifteen percent as of today. And users within the county and surrounding counties are still dealing with implemented and looming pumping restrictions due to this, the sustainability, or excuse me, the the
groundwater.
The words in my mouth right now, but yes, thank you very much. The Sustainable Groundwater Mitigation Act. So with that, you know, like I said, the water supplies are forever changing day to day. And so with this, the district is looking to procure as much supplies as possible. So with that, before your board, the recommendation this morning is approval of the lease with the Kings County Water District to lease the county's water stock in the People's Ditch Company, which would be effective March first, two thousand and twenty four through February twenty eight, two thousand and twenty seven, and authorize the county administrative officer to sign the transfer of the forty acres of water stock in the People's Ditch Company for water years two thousand and twenty four through two thousand and twenty six in compliance with the terms of the lease. So what that second action means is every year, the People's Ditch Company will submit their request for the actual transfer of that stock. And it's on a little carbon copy slip for which previously the CAO has signed approving the transfer of that. And that actually gets the water transferred over. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? I'll move. Move by supervisor Fagundes, second by supervisor Robinson. I know that they acquire it by acre.
Correct.
And they sell it by acre foot. So depending on allocation, they could make double or triple the money depending on how it worked out. But they're the best ones to handle it, so that's the way it works out. I know for myself, I sell mine to my neighbor. Because if he's not pumping, I'm going to pump and we're helping our groundwater, so.
Sure.
Madam clerk, call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. Next item.
Yeah, so the next item before your board is a resolution pertaining to
Okay. We'll get through this pretty quick.
Okay. So before your board, the next item here is a resolution pertaining to the purchase of the state's interest in the Avenal Courthouse property. So on December fifth of last year, your board approved the purchase of the state's fifty eight point one percent interest in real property located at five zero one East King Street in Avenel, which is commonly referred to as the Avenel Courthouse, for a purchase price of two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty five dollars. And what that approval consisted of in that pack of documents back in December was the purchase and sale agreement, the grant deed and the termination of joint occupancy agreement. And so Government Code Section two, seven, two, eight, one prevents the board from accepting the recordation of grant deeds which convey interest in real property without the consent of the board, which is evidenced by a certificate of acceptance that is attached to the back of the grant deed. And so the executed grant deed back in December did not provide for the required board resolution, which references the authorization to go ahead and accept the recordization of the grant deed, which that's needed for proper recording here on the county side of this real estate transaction. So before your board this morning is that required resolution that authorizes to accept the recordation of the grant deed. So it's more of a procedural transaction from what has already been approved by your board back in December of last year for the purchase of the Avenel Courthouse. So with that, the recommendation before your board this morning is to adopt a resolution accepting the recordation of the grant deed for the purchase of the Avenel Courthouse. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Second by supervisor Fagundes, second by supervisor Valley. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Matthew.
Thank you.
Next item. Who's the next one, Kira?
Good morning, Board Members. Kira Martinez. On February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the county fire chief, William Lynch, retired, leaving a vacancy in this role. The board directed staff to initiate recruitment to fill a vacant position. The process has been completed and is recommended that your board appoint the candidate and set the compensation for the fire chief, Salvador Flores, with effective date of March eleventh of two thousand and twenty four. Mr. Flores has a bachelor's degree from Columbia Southern University where he majored in fire administration. He has acquired certificates and licenses issued by the State Board of Fire Service and CAL FIRE. Mr. Flores has been the deputy chief and fire chief, including the CAL OES manager for Imperial County for the past five years. He also has been in the fire service for a total of twenty years and has been with Imperial County for seventeen years. He's currently enrolled in the Masters of Public Administration Emergency Services and graduates in June of two thousand and twenty four. The position is recommended at fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty per month. Mr. Flores unfortunately could not attend today because he also has a board meeting in Imperial County. It is recommended that your board confirm the appointment of Mr. Salvador Flores to the position of county fire chief effective March eleventh, two thousand and twenty four and set the compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So movement, Chair. Move by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. And we'll move on now. We're going to go to a public hearing with the Health Department. Morning Rosemary.
Good morning Chairman, Supervisors. Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'm here today to present an amendment to an existing agreement with KWPH Enterprises Incorporated doing business as American Ambulance and for an adjustment of user fees and extension of that agreement. On August twenty fourth, two thousand and ten, the county and the board initiated an exclusive operating agreement with American Ambulance for the provision of emergency ambulance services and advanced life support or paramedic ambulance services. This agreement established specific performance requirements and placed restrictions on American Ambulance disallowing modifications to user fees without prior board approval. The Kings County Ambulance Commission, which has been in place since nineteen ninety six, serves as the reviewing body for all county, Kings County Emergency Medical Services and review of American Ambulance performance metrics in the county. The members of this commission are representatives of the city and county as a whole and are approved by the Board of Supervisors. Subsequent amendments to the user fee increases were approved by your board on February twenty fifth, two thousand and fourteen and June twenty ninth, two thousand and seventeen. The current five year agreement with American Ambulance was entered into on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. It delineated specific performance requirements, including response times, dispatch center operations and public education and training. On October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, the department received a formal written request from American Ambulance requesting an extension of the agreement term and a request for the user fee increase citing the imperativeness of ensuring the ongoing stability of the emergency medical services systems in Kings County. On the same date, the Kings County Ambulance Commission unanimously recommended the approval of amending this agreement until October thirty first, two thousand and thirty and approval of all rate increases requested by American Ambulance. The rates established in the proposed amendment are the maximum allowable fees, which will be charged to private insurance, Medi-Cal, Medicare and other payers for services provided. These rates cannot be charged unless approved by your Board of Supervisors. And the projected increases to net revenue are basically what American collects is approximately a five point two percent increase due to government payer mixes of paying nine out of ten patients and not paying for additional charges. Private pay patients are capped as to what they are required to pay under California Assembly Bill seven, one, six. And basically that means no out of pocket increases for patients with additional charges that are private pay. And private insurance payers, ten point two percent of the American Ambulance patients will recognize the additional charges. So as required by Government Code Sections five, four, nine, eight, five and five, four, nine, eight, six, which require the county to hold a public hearing in which oral and written presentations may be made before a fee increase may be levied for products and services to the community. And per county council, the service being provided falls under the statutory requirement. A notice was placed in the Hanford Sentinel on February ninth of two thousand and twenty three and included an explanation of the matter and supporting documentation. So we respectfully ask your board to conduct a public hearing regarding the request for American Ambulance for an adjustment of user fees and approve the First Amendment to the existing agreement with KWPH Enterprises Incorporated doing business as American Ambulance for paramedic services extending the term until October thirty first, two thousand and thirty and modifying the user fees. I'm available for any questions. And we also have Dan Lynch, the Director of our Emergency Medical Services Authority, and Todd Valeri from American Ambulance available if any questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board before we close the public hearing? We're open. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Do we have any written correspondence?
I have received no written correspondence, no speaker cards, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised regarding that.
Anybody in the audience like to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it back to the board for vote. Move is presented, Ms. Chair.
Are we not going to take in questions after closing the public hearing? I do have a question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, move by supervisor Nevs. Question by supervisor Valley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was hoping, I know there's some officials from American Ambulance in the audience that they'd come up and introduce themselves. And also I was hoping that they'd be proactive. One, I do support this, but I was hoping someone was going to be proactive to as far as the confidence of the public, getting some, some basic information out there based on the fact, as you outlined, that there's some performance requirements. So any evaluations for, for the confidence of the public specifically on response times, improvements to response times or maintaining response times? I thought that we'd get that kind of information because I think when people hear about it, they'll have more confidence in what we're about to do right now. So.
I didn't read the ambulance commission reports, but those are all public. I guess I could share those. That, because every quarter the ambulance commission meets and they review the metrics. And I don't know, Todd, do you want to explain sort of how American does that or Dan, how the commission works?
So as they're coming up here, I was just assuming that since we're about to extend this contract, right? That, that, and since it's based on performance requirements, that we'd at least get a PowerPoint on some of the, on evaluation of some of those requirements. Because now, now we're about to vote to extend the contract without an evaluation and, and, and sitting here not knowing whether or not the performance requirements were made. I assume they are.
They have been.
Very, very supportive before the public and for the board. I was hoping for a little bit of that information.
I apologize. I was not, I've never done a public hearing, so I didn't realize that.
Not, not your fault, not your Not, not your fault, not your fault. And again.
I appreciate that. Yeah, the commission does review those regularly. And so there haven't been any performance issues for the record, but I apologize for not bringing those to you.
No, and I'm sure the professionals from American Ambulance could speak to that off the top of their head as far as, especially, especially what the public cares about, the simplicity of the response time. Because that's where most complaints, I assume, if any, a lot of them come under that umbrella. So thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and, uh, and, and Board Members. My name is Dan Lynch. I'm your EMS director for the EMS, uh, agency that is responsible for Kings County. I want to tell you about the confidence that the community should have in American Ambulance. As you know, we went through COVID and all of this stuff that was just devastating to healthcare, not just hospitals, but also ambulance services. There are some ambulances just in our valley that are, are still struggling today, um, based on the, just the catastrophic events that occurred during that, those last few years. American Ambulance, although they had challenges, they really, uh, shined through this thing, and it's really because they knew the, how to sustain, how to maintain, how to, how to get through this disaster that was part of healthcare. And I have to tell you, from the EMS agency who, who monitors them, who, who watches their compliance, um, they, they have never failed. They never failed in, in their performance standards that they, uh, have had the last five years. I'm still trying to get past the fact that the contract goes to twenty-thirty that I, I'm just astonished by the, the date, but, but they have never failed. And, and so there, we could show you the response times and all that, but they have always succeeded. And I think the biggest part is, is that most of the, the ambulance providers throughout the valley are struggling with maintaining or sustaining, uh, work, their workforce. American has done, from our observation, has done the, the best by really reinvesting all, all of their resources into their most valued resource, which is their people. And, and that's, uh, that's been the thing that's held this thing together, that they are, um, probably the best-case scenario in, in, in the ambulance business right now. So we really appreciate and we're, we're very fortunate to have, um, an, an American ambulance in Kings County, but also Fresno County. So I, I just want to point that out.
Sir, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Members Board. My name is Todd Valeri, and I'm the owner of American Ambulance. I started my career in, yes, here in Kings County in nineteen eighty-one and, uh, working as an EMSG and worked my way up, uh, to where I now own this company, representing nearly eight hundred employees, uh, throughout our services. But here in, uh, Kings County, we're particularly proud of the services that we offer. It's an honor. It's a privilege, and it's a responsibility we take very seriously. And, um, that's in all aspects of our operation and continually trying to improve. These are very difficult situations that we provide services, and sometimes, um, we miss the mark. But when we do, we view this as an opportunity for improvement. And again, we're very proud of the services that we offer. And that's really not about equipment and vehicles. It's about people. And when you call for an ambulance, it's that relationship between a care provider and a patient that matter most. And, uh, as Dan Lynch had mentioned, we do invest in our employees pretty significantly. And, uh, as a result, since November twenty-twenty, when this current agreement first began, we've increased our, uh, field employee wages twenty-nine point six percent. That has been dramatic in the recruitment and retention of really the best EMS professionals I think there are. Uh, I'm a board member of the California Ambulance Association, a board member of the nine-one-one Ambulance Alliance. Um, I'm definitely have, have my finger on the pulse of what's going on in this industry. And I can tell you the services that you, uh, our residents here in Kings County and visitors receive from an EMS standpoint are second to none. And we should all be proud of that. So here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And, and, uh, sir, I saw you standing back there. I saw you and your colleagues and the gentlemen over here. I, I wanted to make sure that you had the ability to say those positive things, and I thought the, uh, hearing was moving too quick without you getting a chance. You, you spoke last time you were here and, uh, noted out that you started Kings County and, and now you're, um, uh, you know, you're, have ownership of the company. And I just want to make sure that the work of the men and women in your organization are highlighted. I already know you're doing good. My good friend, Henry Prey Sr., former Fresno County Supervisor, keeps you well-informed, um, on, on you guys and, and progress. And so thank, thank you for that. Thanks, thanks for coming to speak on there. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, I, um, hand in hand with this also is the men and women of the Kings County Fire Department, who also, when you make that nine-one-one call, they show up with you guys as well. And I don't want that action to, to go unnoticed, too, because the spotlight, the spotlight is on, on response here and taking care of the people of Kings County. And you guys, uh, make a great team. So thank you.
Very good. Any other question? I know we have motion, motion by Nevs.
I, I would, this just came up the other day. This is just, uh, helping with my confusion. So if something happens on scene, and let's say you have to use a defibrillator or help somebody on site.
Right.
Are there compensation features for that? Because where this came up the other day was the incentive really is on the transportation feature as opposed to onsite.
Uh, there are no itemized charges. Our charges are a all-inclusive rate and a mileage charge, and that's it. So, um, there's no incentive to either provide or withhold, um, services. We're, we're doing the best we can. And, uh, I'm, thank you for the question.
Do you have a second, Mr. Chair?
We had to use it, uh, about three weeks ago. You guys did a great job. You got there faster than I could, so. And I had to go six miles, and that was like that, so.
They beat you in your Corvette?
No, I was in my work truck, my work truck. We have motion by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Valley, and unfortunately call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard for goodness.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, next item will be administrative hearing. John Devlin and Evan Jones. Good morning, Evan.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. I am Evan C. Jones, your purchasing manager and agent for the County of Kings. Before you today, as you're aware of, New Perceptions North LLC has filed an appeal of the decision of Kings County Behavioral Health to recommend the award of the Adult Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services Agreement, which is the subject of Request for Proposal twenty-two-four twenty-one to another bidder. The recommendation I have before you today is that in this hearing that you make one of the following findings. New Perceptions protest lacks merit. The behavioral health recommendation toward RFP twenty-two-four twenty-one to Champions Recovery Alternative Programs Incorporated and Recover Medical Group PC was reached in a fair and reasonable manner and therefore will not be overturned by the board. Or New Perceptions protest has merit, and the board finds that all proposals received in response to RFP twenty-two-four twenty-one must be reevaluated by individuals other than those involved in initial evaluation committee. Or New Perceptions protest has merit, and the board finds the RFP twenty-two-four twenty-one a failure, rejects all proposals received in response thereto, and directs Behavioral Health to issue a new RFP for Adult Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services. And there is no impact to the County General Fund. Just as a background to this, on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the purchasing department released an RFP on behalf of Behavioral Health to solicit proposals for Adult Substance Abuse Disorder Treatment Services. The deadline for submitting proposals was November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, on or before four P M. local time. The purchasing department received responses from three prospective bidders. The three bidders for Champions Recovery, Alternative Programs Incorporated, Recover Medical Group PC, and New Perceptions. The purchasing department contacted Behavioral Health to pick up the copies of proposals, and each proposal included five copies as required under the instruction. And as county policy, the purchasing department retained the original proposals. The copies were picked up on Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-three, it should be, and taken back to Behavioral Health for review and evaluation. The submitted proposals were evaluated by committee comprised of individuals from Behavioral Health, which we call the Committee. Evaluation Committee was considered the score given to each proposer's written proposal and ranked the propos- proposers accordingly. Champions and Recover Medical Group were ranked the highest. Based on this, Behavioral Health decided to recommend that Champions and Recover Medical Group be awarded the contract for RFP twenty-two-four twenty-one as the winning proposers. The purchasing department was notified and sent out the notice of intent to award letters to Champions and Recover Medical Group. The announcement of the intent to award letter was sent to New Perceptions and sent on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the latter letter, the proposer was informed that they could appeal this decision in accordance with the appeal procedure outlined in the RFP. On January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the purchasing department received an email from New Perceptions stating they were appealing the decision of the notice of intent to award. The purchasing department notified Behavioral Health of the informal email sent to appeal the decision. January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the purchasing department manager received a phone call from New Perception CEO Paul Flint Anderson, requesting that he and the purchasing department manager meet and discuss the reason or reasons they were not awarded the RFP in question. Purchasing department manager refused to meet and based it upon the formal protest procedure as outlined in the RFP and in the purchasing policy of the County of Kings. On January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, a formal appeal letter along with the Public Records Request Act, Records Act request was received by the purchasing department. The purchasing department notified Behavioral Health of this letter and attached an email dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. A reply to New Perceptions protest was developed, drafted, and emailed to New Perceptions on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. On February fifth, twenty twenty-four, New Perceptions notified the clerk of the board that they would pursue their protest to the board as permitted under Section nine B Protest Procedures of the Kings County Purchasing Policy. New Perceptions then submitted their protest of award to the clerk of the board via hand delivery on February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the request was forwarded to administration, county council, and information technology, or purchasing department for review and to schedule a hearing before the board, which we have today. So I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have regarding this protest.
Any questions at this time? Uh, so Evan, you're representing the purchasing side of it, right?
That is correct.
And so do we have Dr. Lewis or?
Dr. Lewis and, uh, Kristi Lupus should be on the web acts.
We have Kristi and Dr. Lewis available for questions at this time. You know, this is.
If I can, um, insert some procedures here for the conduct of the hearing, would that be acceptable, supervisor? Um, um, as, uh, based upon historic practice, what we've currently done is opened the hearing, allowed for Behavioral Health to provide some comments about the processes. I know that much of the process was outlined by Evan here, but Behavioral Health might have some supplemental information about what the RFP was for. Um, after that, then the Board of Supervisors can ask Behavioral Health any questions that they may have about the processes. And, um, and then it can move to New Perceptions, um, to present their challenge, to present the basis for their appeal. Um, after which the Board of Supervisors can then ask New Perceptions questions and then have Behavioral Health respond to any of those, um, challenges and any further questions from the board.
At this time, thank you, Evan. We'll go ahead and open it up for, uh, open up the administrative hearing at this time, and we'll let Dr. Lewis or Kristi speak on their behalf.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Lewis just got cut off, and so she's rejoining. So this is Kristi Leppe, the Deputy Director at Kings County Behavioral Health. And I can add to some of the background, although I think Evan covered it well, um, as to why or the process of going to RFP. As to speak to why we went to RFP, uh, the department has had, um, longstanding contracts with, um, some core providers for especially mental health services and for drug medical services for mental health and substance use disorder for decades. And so it is, um, the time to bring those contracts to RFP to ensure that we have, um, the best practice among the services that are being provided, as well as we're able to review, um, and open it up to all providers who may be interested in providing services to the great county of Kings. And so we've done that, uh, with our children, especially mental health service provider, as you might remember. And now we're doing that with our adult outpatient, um, substance use disorder services. And in the future, um, this year, we'll be bringing our adult, um, especially mental health services, um, to RFP. So that it was the purpose for going out to RFP for outpatient. I will say in this instance, though, we are in a unique, uh, position that we weren't, we're not in, in prior years, in that we are now under CalAin payment reform, as I've reported before your board. Previously, this poses an opportunity in that the state has us moving, all counties moving their line item budgets and their cost reconciliation budgets to a, a rate-based budget. And so providers and the county are able to, um, draw down revenues for the services that they provide to the Medi-Cal beneficiaries that they serve, and those revenues then will pay for the cost of doing service, as well as any additional revenues to be able to expand and enhance services as needed based on community need. With this, it allows us to now, um, look at expanding our services to potentially multiple providers and doing it in a way that might be more broadly based throughout the county than previously. And so we really were interested in looking at all the bids in the potential of doing multiple providers. I apologize, I'm sick, and so my voice is cutting out. But we were really looking at hopefully doing multiple providers, and in doing that, um, we were able to identify the ability to award to outpatient providers. And that's Request for Proposal process. And that is some of the background as to why we went to RFP. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Kristi Lupus? Uh, Dr. Lewis, are you on yet?
I am. I'm so sorry. Right as I connected, I got cut off. And I, so I missed a little bit of that. Did, was there another question that you needed?
No, is there anything you want to add to what, uh, Kristi presented?
No, actually, we went over the questions together, so I'm pretty sure I'm aware of what Kristi, Kristi just said. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So at this point, we'll turn it over to, uh, new beginnings, right?
New perceptions.
Is anybody here for new perceptions? Nobody here for new perceptions? Online? Anything written from new perceptions?
Other than their protest letter, no.
Okay, so do I close the public administrative hearing? I take it back to the board for votes?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay, we'll close the public administrative hearing at this time and go back to the board for, uh, direction or discussion. Anybody? If there are no questions or comments, Mr. Chair, uh, move to go ahead and, um, reject, uh, the protest.
Would that be option number one under the, um, on the agenda item to, um, find that the protest lacks merit and Behavioral Health's recommendation toward RFP twenty-two-four dash twenty-one to Champions Recovery Alternative Program Inc. and Recover Medical Group was reached in a fair and reasonable manner and therefore will not be overturned by the board?
Thank you for saying that, yeah. Exactly, that's. I just didn't put it in as many words.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by supervisor Nevs. Second by supervisor for goodness, and unfortunately call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard for goodness.
Yes. Okay, live in favor. We've, uh, approved as presented, uh, chosen item eight, direction eight. That's not bad. We're good to go. We'll go on now and go to, uh, Board Member comments. By Nevs, you want to start? Uh, we haven't met in a couple of weeks, so it's a big one. Um, American Legion Post one hundred continues to serve breakfast. I'm going to thank them. Uh, rack, wrapped up the, uh, local master plan for aging report for both, uh, Kings and Tulare Counties on February eighth. Uh, those meetings started in October of two thousand twenty-two and established a strategy, um, to, uh, add priorities to assist older, uh, adults who live independently and with dignity. Uh, the plan will now go to the state and be added to a report generated on the statewide effort with all the emphasis on community and home-based, uh, care delivery systems. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the Hanford Sentinel for their. delivery systems. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the Hanford Sentinel for their ribbon cutting. Uh, they, on the new, uh, office on East Sixth Street, um, they had a good turnout. Uh, attended the swearing in of the new police chief in Avanale. Um, also attended the, uh, Blue Sky Utility Energy, uh, Storage Ribbon Cutting at the Hanford Mall. Uh, this project tied the solar panel project that they installed in, uh, two thousand seventeen and added, uh, energy storage, uh, for use at the, uh, Hanford Mall and turned out to be a very nice project and certainly want to wish them well. And they are available if, uh, anybody else is willing to, uh, have energy storage, uh, through a solar, um, uh, generation. Also attended the first five meeting on the, of, uh, two thousand twenty four, uh, we began by establishing a nomination committee, um, and, uh, go through the chairs, uh, receive the annual evaluation for all of the funded projects, uh, from first five. Uh, the spotlight on service was highlighted, uh, the United Cerebral Policy of, uh, Central California. And all of their efforts is, um, really focusing on, uh, the parent me and the special needs programs. Uh, declining revenue continues to challenge the first five funding. Um, and there is a pursuit of, uh, finding other revenue streams to be able to keep, uh, many of those programs viable and, and available in the county. Uh, Calviva also had a meeting. Uh, we updated all of the oversight monitoring of, uh, Health Net, which is our strategic partner in delivering the services. Uh, enrollment membership at the end of December was, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and seventeen souls. Um, continues to decline as the state has opened up at the disenrollment after the pandemic. Um, in six months, we lost about fifteen thousand, uh, in membership, and that's about halfway through the, uh, the process. Uh, we also discussed hiring a health equity officer and approved, uh, the selection process and continue to work on the, uh, work plans for two thousand twenty four. Uh, the high school basketball season wrapped up, uh, with senior games and playoff and want to wish, uh, all of the teams a very good, uh, uh, unsuccessful year. Um, and the central section, uh, championship, uh, winners will now go, uh, on to play at state. The, uh, Lamoore College, uh, also will have a, uh, home con, wrapped up, uh, conference play and, uh, with the sophomore games and, uh, regional playoffs, uh, begin tomorrow when San Joaquin Delta Mustangs visit Kings County for a seven o'clock game against the Golden Eagles.
Men's basketball.
Uh?
That men's basketball.
Men's basketball.
Yes.
So.
First time.
First time. So congratulations to the Golden Eagles and come out tomorrow and have some popcorn. Also attended the, uh, city county coordinating meeting in Avanale. A busy night of presentations, the air board, PG and E updates, election department, uh, Loopy was there, but he didn't give out pins. I don't, I'll have to work on that. Um, and, uh, Valley Voices as well as Chris Com, uh, made a full evening of it and certainly want to thank them for, uh, their hospitality and the food. Um, attended the, uh, Kings County Health Equity Advisory Panel. This is the second meeting, uh, that they've had. Uh, health equity is becoming a area of focus, um, in many areas of healthcare and, uh, behavioral health. So, uh, they continue to meet, will continue to work on, uh, those policies and procedures. Had the ability to attend the Carnegie Museum, uh, reception on, uh, Friday. Uh, the, uh, floors have been stripped and refurnished and, uh, paint has really brightened up that structure and it's a hundred and nineteen year, um, existence. And, uh, they'll, uh, open up the, uh, next, uh, presentation, uh, in March. Uh, Knights of Columbus had a pancake breakfast, uh, pretty well attended, and then Cabrillo, uh, Club also had a membership luncheon. Uh, yesterday attended the, uh, Kings United Way, uh, Emergency Food and Shelter Program Disbursement of Funds, uh, Kings County Community Action Salvation Army, Kings, uh, County Commission on Aging, uh, received funding as well as other organizations like, uh, the Soup Kitchen, Central California, uh, Food Bank, St. Bridget's, uh, Outreach Center, uh, Catholic Charities, Diocese of Fresno. Uh, there's never enough money to meet all the needs and the community needs to continue to support, uh, the foundation of these, uh, food programs. And then yesterday, uh, Kings County Behavioral Health, uh, had their meeting. Uh, the board retreat will, uh, happen, uh, next, uh, next week, March sixth, uh, with updates on staffing, medical reimbursement programs, and evaluation of, uh, adult and children services was also presented. So with that, thank you very much, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Doug. Um, uh, here, two weeks ago for the tractor pulls in Tulare for the equipment show, I did, uh, participated and helped the executive ten do a couple hundred pounds of meat for them. And, uh, it was well attended, but it only thing was on Ash Wednesday, and I think I brought most of the meat home. Well, but they, they jigs.
What's the difference?
No fish?
That at the, at the ag show or fairgrounds?
No, that field fairground. That's what they do that. They've been doing that, uh, ever since that started. So, and then I had the meeting, K W R A, uh, we had a very short meeting with that. And the Knights of Columbus, I also attended the breakfast, uh, Sunday that was well attended. And, uh, Commission on Aging, we had, uh, uh, meeting last Wednesday, Thursday, and that was all always well attended there. So, that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chuck. Uh, as, as most of you know, I, I've been laying low on, uh, February, uh, fifteenth, uh, my mother passed and, uh, she's ninety-two years old, Jenny Flores, lived a beautiful life. And, uh, and so I've been busy with that and, uh, and the family. Uh, mom, uh, has been here to our chambers, uh, a few times and would come for some of the functions and, uh, and so she's going to be missed. But I want to thank everyone for the calls, messages, uh, texts, the condolences, very much appreciated. So, so thank you. And then last, Ms. Chair, uh, the, um, the Kettleman, uh, issue, Kettleman City, I'm getting a lot of, uh, uh, calls and outreach from, uh, business owners there as we know they're being negatively, negatively, uh, impacted by the closures, uh, resulting with the, uh, where the bridge repair or replacement. And, um, so Dominic, uh, I've, I've been working with Dominic. I know he's working with officials for improved signage and, and letting people know about the detours. But I think, uh, I think we need to take a look at the messaging because the message out there that's coming to me from people from Clovis or Fresno area is that Kettleman City is closed. That Kettleman City is not closed. They're open for business. Uh, if you take the detour, you'll end up in Kettleman City and you can still shop there, dine there, gas up there, get your In-N-Out Burger, um, your Bravo Farms fix, uh, but that, that.
Charge your Tesla too.
Yes, sir. That messaging though is, uh, I think it's a little skewed that people actually think Kettleman City's closed. And if we don't do something about that, we're going to fill those negative impacts fiscally as well. And so I know, uh, I know this isn't anything new to us. I know that we were well, we're being informed well ahead of time. This is going to be an issue. And so, uh, I, I would just ask staff that we stand ready to in case we have to, uh, deal with some of those fiscal impacts out there. But, um, for some to take a look at the, uh, messaging there because again, Kettleman City is open. So thank you, sir.
Kind of a follow up on that, Ms. Chair, to, uh, Avanale was kind of making the, uh, it, it was on the third day of the closure, but Avanale was seeing a lot more traffic coming through Avanale, which is not part of the route, uh, detour. Um, so we might be hearing from Avanale as well about an increase in traffic. And then on Monday, uh, Caltrans closed down forty-one at Quail. And so that's going to further complicate, uh, the detour. And, um, the state of California has not really updated any of the different map, mapping, uh, applications that many people use during their transportation and movement. Um, and that's been part of the problem if we can convince them. Supervisor Verboon and I have a meeting, uh, tomorrow with Caltrans at Association of Governments will try to bring that up and try to bring those, uh, detours to a more, uh, active level. Uh, but, um, that detour is going to extend deep into the summer. So, uh, we're going to have a long time, long time haul. Um, and then the bad time, uh, even for emergency services, should we have an incident on there, it's just going to be difficult because that's just going to limit the options. There, there are not very many options anyway. Um, and at some point, they'll be done.
And thank you for representing them.
You know, so we'll, we'll try to get some of those resolved tomorrow. But Caltrans is a very difficult piece to, sure, try to change.
Sure. And I was, I'm pointing out last one's chair, it's not our local media that is, um, putting, uh, the messaging out there. I think it's the bigger markets, the SACB, the Fresno B. The way they put it out there lets people from up north believe that Kettleman's closed. So that's going to be.
Get their infrastructure out there, maybe have, uh, go to the businesses out there, talk to them and see what they would like to upset, attract people back in there.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure, um, early week it'll be packed with Teslas. They're not going to come, they're not going to, they're just in their car and wait until the car chart get the hell out of there.
Correct. Yeah, no, there'll be a lot, still be a lot of traffic down, uh, I five. I just kind of wonder how much of that traffic in Kettleman City is forty-one driven, uh, versus, um, I five driven. Uh, but this unfortunately will give us an opportunity to judge that.
Yes, sir.
Good luck, Robson.
All right. Uh, Kettleman City is open for business. Thanks, sir. All right. February nineteenth through February fourteenth, Supervisor Verboon and I, uh, Supervisor Verboon and I attended the NACO Conference, which is the National Association of County Conference in Washington, D.C. We met with, uh, Congressman Valadeo's office, Senator Butler's office. That's the replacement for Senator Feinstein. Yeah, Senator Padilla's office, Congressman Costa's office, and the Director of COPS, which is the Citizens on Patrol Program. Uh, we discussed raising Pine Flat Dam, restoring funding for the Aerial Snow Observatory and COPS funding. Thursday, the fifteenth, uh, attended San Joaquin Valley Airboard Meeting. EPA continues to make stricter standards without addressing the federal responsibilities. So that becomes challenging. The last mile here is, is always the most costly. They cleaned up about ninety-three percent of the air since the late eighties, or actually the, uh, late seventies, early eighties. And, um, and this is the hardest part. And then, uh, Tuesday, the twentieth, attended the homeless collaborative meeting with Supervisor Verboon, Karia and Sheriff Robinson. And twenty-first, attended the city county coordination meeting in Avanale with Supervisor Nevs, Karia Lupe, and, and many of the staffs.
Yeah, I added a little bit. So we went to the Department of Justice and, uh, they were excited to see us. The Department of Justice Building is a separate building from anything else. It's really hard to get into. But we like to go there every four years to talk about how to apply for a COPS grant. Well, we got there, finally got, it takes about half hour to get searched and go through the building there and, 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 and the Velitekers. We get up there, they got three people waiting for us to talk to us. The Director Hugh Clements, which is appointed by the President, heard we were going to come there and spend an hour with us to talk about a program and how to apply. So, uh, we made a name for ourselves by going up there and asking questions and, uh, let's keep that going in the next couple of years. So that was, that was a big deal. Uh, you know, Senator Butler talked to her staff and Senator Padilla's staff. So they're, they're recognizing us and they know we're there for, for business. So, but you only have thirty minutes to get your plaintiff. So I think we did pretty good job. We were pretty efficient. We were there for most of it. So, uh, we also got to talk to Tom Blissack, Secretary Ag. He thought we're happy with me. He kept calling me out in the rest of the meeting, but the crowd leveled, I had to say. And then we talked to, uh, oh, President Biden was there on Monday. So got to hear his speech. Not sure what he said. He had a little bit of mumbling going on. Uh, we recorded it, but, uh, yeah, it's always good to have respect for your president. But, uh, yeah, we got some issues there. So with that, uh, we'll go and just turn on to.
Yes, we do have quite a few items. So the board received the Kings County Monthly Fund Balance Report dated January twenty-fifth from the Kings County Director of Finance. The board also received from the Kings County Department of Finance, the Report of Cash and Investment dated December thirty-first. Board received correspondence from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control dated February fourteenth regarding the designation of a subordinate offer or body to make determinations of public convenience or necessity regarding A B C license applications. The board received a public notice from Chemical Waste Management on February twelfth regarding a permit modification in Kettleman Hills facility. The board received correspondence from County of San Mateo dated February seventh regarding the adoption of a resolution to declare loneliness a public health crisis. And lastly, the board received correspondence from Tulare Lake Reclamation District, seven sixty-one, dated February thirteenth regarding the appointment of new members to the Board of Trustees. For upcoming events, the Kings County Behavioral Health will host their veteran support group on February twenty-seventh from five thirty to seven thirty. That's today at the Veterans' Memorial Hall in Hanford. Kings County Library Avanale Branch will host its movie time on February twenty-eighth. That's tomorrow from three to five P M. And also with the spring break approaching, don't forget that the Kings County Library Car holders can check out California State Park Pass for free that works to visit more than two hundred California parks, lake beaches, and monuments. Contact, contact your local Kings County Branch Library for details. Kings County is gearing up for the presidential primary election, which will take place March fifth. For more information, please visit the Elections Department webpage. Kings County Behavioral Health will host their family member support group March fifth, five thirty, seven thirty at their, um, at the old hospital location. Kings County partnership with the Central California Blood Center will have another employee blood drive and it also opens to the public on March seventh from nine A M. to one P M. Buses will be here on campus at the old, uh, Grand Jury Parking Lot. And lastly, the Kings County will host their Youth and County Government Day on Tuesday, March nineteenth from eight thirty to one thirty P M., where we are estimated to get sixty high school students from all the schools and have the opportunity to drop shadow at different departments. The deadline for students to submit their applications is February, was actually yesterday. The upcoming agenda items for March fifth, we do have a large board meeting. Administration has five items. One is regarding the Dry Year Water Transfer Program within History Month and an amendment to the jail medical contract, federal earmark project funding request, and a study session on a proposal for a county temporary homeless shelter. Child Support Services has an item regarding requests for proposal for a process server. Human Services Agency has an item regarding Social Work Appreciation Month. Health has an item regarding a second amendment to the WIC program agreement. RIT has an item regarding the refresh purchases with Dell Computer. Public Works has a few items regarding the fire station, number five remodel, a CDBG Kettleman City, uh, Patrol Avenue Improvement Project, and the Avanale Cut Off Road Improvement Phase One Project. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, is that process server job, is that a part-time job? I saw the post in.
The position that we have for the county is a full-time position. Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll go into closed session and it's going to be personal matter, government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, public employee employment, fire chief, uh, personal matter, government code section five, nine, four, five, seven, public employee, library director, conference, little property negotiator, government code section five, four, nine, nine, six, eight, uh, property five oh one, East Street, Avanale, California, nine three two oh four, A B C negotiator, Kerry Martinez, negotiating party city of Avanale, under negotiation price terms, uh, payment and, uh, significant exposure to litigation, uh, government code section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine. And it's been a good adjourned until next Tuesday, March fifth, nine A M. Thank you.